Hi guys, welcome back to my channel. Welcome to this week's Lini Diaries. Today is Thursday and I was at school attending my tutorials and I came back to study and I've been studying since around 3:00 and it's currently 17:53. I have a semester test for 2E tomorrow and I also have a class test for Economics 2B tomorrow. And I have an online test that will be open from 8:00 until 4:00 PM, meaning that when I wake up, I need to write the test and then go for my class test. It's 13:50 for Economics 2B and then in the evening at 6:00 PM, I'm gonna be writing my semester test for Economics 2E. You see how I'm studying for my test? Very demure, very cutesy, very mindful. I love this trend so much. Hi guys, welcome to another day in this vlog. Namokhle Islam and I think I mentioned earlier I'm writing 3 things on lunch. I'm drained already because like, why are they abusing me? Why, why this is educational abuse? But on a lighter note, I think I'm ready to write even if Bangati was a man just wopala. I'm pretty sure I'm gonna nail that test, the 2E one, the Economics 2E one. ECM, okay, when I say ECM guys, just know that I'm talking about Economics. ECM, I'm not too sure because... Hey, you can never be sure with the Economics. But yeah, I'm gonna write the online test when I come back from my semester test at 8:00. Yeah, because like they extended the time. So right now, I just wanna make sure I get ready for Economics Class Test 2B and Economics 2E. But I'm gonna come back after my class test because like I will need to eat and freshen up and you know, be ready. Yeah, so yeah, right now, I just wanna go and make breakfast. I'm gonna make jango oats. You guys know I love jango oats. I always make jango oats all the time, every day. Me and jango oats forever team. Yeah, I showered, I just need to do my bed, tidy up and eat. Yeah, and I'll see you guys throughout the video. Guys, I am on my way to write Eco to see... Yeah, let's go fetch this distinction. Let's go fetch it. I can feel it in my bones. We're done. I gotta deep breathe and I get to my room. We're done. Sanbaran guys, I'm here to give you an update about yesterday's Economics 2E test. It wasn't bad guys, like honestly speaking, it wasn't bad. But on my side, Mina ngikweliwe, I think 2 or 3 things, lapa. No, but I freestyled. One thing about me, I will freestyle. I will freestyle because it's not that I didn't know like the content I did, but like I forgot like the actual, actual thing, you know, but like I freestyled. I freestyled, the test was 1 hour 30 minutes. I finished writing in an hour. Yeah, it wasn't bad, honestly, it wasn't bad. So the agenda for today, I'm studying for next week's test because I'm writing 3 tests next week, so I need to prepare. I'm writing on Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday. Monday morning, Tuesday afternoon and Wednesday afternoon as well. I think so, yeah. Yeah, so... Asfu nde, asfu nde ni, esisina lokundesmosis klatz guys, asfu nde ni, Mina nansu sokuluma, man tati brik. Hi.
Nam.
Namakwesi.
Namapen.
Yes. Thank you. Let's... Yeah, I wanna use the front camera. Honestly, let's see what I've got from Hikus 60/60. I spent 200, including the delivery. I got like 7 albums. Nothing too hectic, nothing... Firstly, I got Amma Snowballs. They were like 25 rands. I've been craving, so I was like, let me get them. And then, I got the green tea mint flavored. Haven't had this in a while. I haven't had this in a while, so I really needed it. Can't live without green tea. If you don't mazane and you don't drink green tea. Otsin ya pella, otsin ya sisi njangala. Next up, I got 6 eggs, for 20 rands. Yeah, because I'm almost running out of eggs. And then, I got a milk because... Otsa hi 17, god wola siga pella. Then I got bananas, small bananas. I think they were like 17 rands, 16, 17, 20, not more than 20 rands though, yeah. And then, I got dishwashing liquid, the house brand because dishwashing liquid, I'm basically ngaka. Ngaka, and yeah, I got this one. Ngaka, kano kusewandi salia, spearmint fragrance. The last item I've got was this Dawn Firming Body Cream. I saw this on TikTok. Oh, let me show you guys. Yeah, I saw this on TikTok and I was like, let me try it out. Let me try it out and it being... Smells, smells good. Yeah, it does smell good, so... But it helps with stretch marks and yeah, it reduces the appearance of stretch marks. So yeah, I'm gonna give you guys a review after a month, if I remembered. But yeah, I will remember because I'll use this every day, so I will remember. Now I'll give you guys a review. That was all.
Manje, siso wenda jan.
Ngana.
Otsu kwa siwa, wutsumwama mi, uwi clienti MPS. Mserezi wetu sisi mfigel.
Mserezi mfigelana.
Okay.
Think this is something MPS can kill now.
Uka yoke wa yansa leto before wa ni woningina.
It's a bit more complex now that it's so public.
Otsu nara liya, ai komkla pe wumla yefi.
I can prove it for day. When silence are high, makes him...
Otsu kwa siwa tini.
Um, yeah. Namolha, I spent the whole day, not necessarily the whole day, but like I spent most of my day studying for Public Economics for the test that I'm writing tomorrow at 8:00 AM. Hmm, what else did I wanna tell you guys? Oh, today I cleaned my room, I did my laundry. Yeah, in the morning though, yeah, around like 8:00. My friend woke me up at 8:00 to go do laundry because yeah... And she did. Love her down, sana because like this, wunzi muktuli space laundry, it's always packed, it's always packed. But right now, what I want to do is cram for the last time before I go to bed. It's almost 8:00, it's 10 minutes to 8:00, so I wanna cram for the last time. By 12:00, I need to be asleep because I'm gonna wake up at 8:00, get ready and go write. And then, attend my classes and then come back to study for Business. Go write Business the next day at 6:00 PM. Come back and study for Economics 2B. Ngipila e movie, matikuswa tuangi kats, cuz wow. But yeah guys, I'll see you guys tomorrow. I love you guys so much. Good morning guys. Um, yeah. I'm running late, but I'm running on time at the same time. So let's go write Public Economics. Praying and hoping goes well. I'll see you guys when I come back. Sanbaran guys, I just came back from writing Public Economics Semester Test 1. Honestly speaking... Yo, honestly speaking, the paper was being like the questions were the questions that were in the tutorial, right? The thing is with this module, cramming doesn't help. You need to understand because if you cram and you go write what you crammed, you're gonna get your zero. They mark your understanding, not what the lecture slides or the tutorials are saying. The only thing that you need to copy and paste exactly as it is, is the graph. But anything else, just need to make sure that you explain it in a way that it shows that you understand the concept or what you're being asked. Cuz people are crying with this module. They are crying. So I hope it went well. I really hope it went well. At this point, inji... Injigishono 50% in the cold bank, like I would be so grateful. Mangatul 50%. Mangatul 25 for 25 because the paper was out of 15. I would be so grateful, but yeah, I'm done writing. 2 more semester tests left, one for Business and Economics. Not 2 more, 3. One for Business tomorrow and then the other one for Economics on Wednesday and the other Economics 3B on Monday, mixed-up Monday, and then I'll be done with that term. But yeah, I came back to this because you, when you nklis kudi ni, and I'm not gonna attend my next class, I'm gonna attend the last one, which is Economics 3B. And yeah guys, I will see you later today. Hi my beautiful stars. Today is Tuesday and I'm writing Business Management Semester Test 1. And I have good news guys. I have good news, we are on 500 subscribers. Guys, I'm so happy. I'm so, so happy, like what? 500 people watch my videos? Like that's a lot of people, that's a lot of people. And I just wanted to say, I appreciate each and every one of you and I love you guys so much. So I'm writing in... Let me check the time. I'm writing in 40 minutes. I just wanna quickly eat and head out to write. This thing of writing at 6:00 PM is not cool guys, like it's draining, ne? It's draining because you have the whole day and then you're writing in the evening. Yo sana, it's draining, but... I'm having snowballs. Mina mabisama snowballs guys. Some chickers. They're really nice. Wish I could have more. I'm gonna eat and yeah, I will speak when I get back. I will just put it out there with you. I am tired. Even my voice is tired. But yeah, I wrote, I wrote and I'm not really happy with the test because there was so much to write and there was little time guys. So we had like a case study, a 2-page case study to read at the venue, ne? And then answer 20 marks, 2 20 marks, okay, 2 20 marks questions, 40 marks out of that case study. And you have to discuss, you have to get examples from the case study. You have to explain, you have to write a lot of things. And then we had... Yeah, and then we have like a scenario and then... Yeah, it was in 20 marks as well. I don't know, I don't remember. But the paper was out of 100 and we had 2 hours to finish. But I came back to this and I ate, I ate chips, fried chips with bread. And now I wanna chill for like an hour and then study for Economics 2B because I'm writing it tomorrow at 6:00. Yo, I can't wait to finish writing tomorrow and come back to sleep. I'm not gonna sleep tonight. I need to push, to push, I need to push. But yeah guys, that's, yeah, that's today. I'll see you guys later when I'm studying. I am done studying. But the problem is, I feel like I'm not gonna remember everything, especially the proofs. But let me, let me continue studying until I feel sleepy. Because yo, the energy drink, ingi puzzle, guys, I don't recommend. And I don't know why I bought it because the last, the last time I had the blue one, yo, my heart was beating fast. I was sweating. I had a lot of energy. Like that thing messed up with my sleeping routine, so... Angas, what got into me to buy it today, but yo, I don't recommend guys, don't buy it. Yeah. Wake up maybe around 12:00 and continue studying? I don't know. I don't know. What should I do? I wish you guys were here to tell me what to do. Hi my beautiful stars. I came back from writing and I went straight to the kitchen to cook because I was hungry. This is what I made. I wanna talk about the paper. Because some of the questions were like, okay, I know this, I know this from the tutorial, so... Yeah, I'm not too sure about them, yeah, but we'll see when my script comes back. Because yeah, I don't wanna talk too much about it, it's not gonna be over excited, ganti. So yeah guys, I'll see you guys tomorrow. Tomorrow I'm attending and... I think it basically shall 7:00, ngalak, and then I woke up before 12:00. I think I woke up at like 11:00 something. Think I woke up at like eleven something. When I woke up, I went straight to the shower. I showered and I studied. I still had energy, guys. I'm not tired. I'm not tired, like. Never again. So I do not recommend, guys. I do not. Please learn from me. Do not buy switch. Do not. But I will see you guys tomorrow. I love you guys so much. Hi, my beautiful stars. Today's Thursday. I'm trying to put on my shoes. Today's Thursday and I have two tutorials, one for Public Economics and another one for Econometrics three P. Um, I'm currently eating. I'm having chocolate loops and yeah, let's eat and head out. I wanna show you guys what I'm wearing. This T-shirt from Redbit. I'm wearing gray sweatpants from Redbit. Gonna show you when I'm outside. And I'm gonna wear these Air Forces. So yeah, guys, let me eat and head out. I'll see you. Guys, but I'll see you. Hi, my beautiful stars. Um, I'm about to go in in the tutorial, so I wanted to show you guys how cute I'm looking. My skin is giving in the sun, but when you see me in real life, it's not like this, guys. But bad and beautiful either way. I don't even look at the keypad.
But you will get there. You are in which year of studies now?
We're doing our final year.
And welcome for the second time to study day. This first time it was sweet.
Hi, stars. We are done for the day. And also I met Esabi and she was so cute. Oh my God. She came to me. I was waiting to go in in class, nah? We've arrived already been. And she came to me and she was like, hi, I watch your videos. And I was like, on YouTube. And she's like, yeah. I'm like, oh my God, you're so pretty. And she gave me a hug. It was so cute. But I think I acted like in a weird way because I don't know how to act when I meet someone who watches my videos. I mean, it it doesn't happen all the time, but like, I was just so happy. That made my day. So if you're watching this, girl, you made my day. You made my day. So yeah, I'm going home to sleep, to sleep in Katteli man. I'll start studying later tonight. Hi, guys. I just woke up. I'm contemplating to wake up and study for my test on Monday. Just so tired. I honestly feel like crying right now because I'm so tired. I'm so tired. Yeah, I'm tired. I'm tired. I miss my mom so much. I miss home so much. Hi, my beautiful stars. Um, I hope everyone is well. I hope you guys are doing good. I hope you are taking care of yourselves. I'm okay now. Um, the last time he saw me, guys, I was not feeling good. I was crying and you know, I was just not good, yeah, so. Yeah, later that day, as you guys might have seen, we went to an event. It was good. It was nice. I enjoyed myself and I came back to sleep. On Saturday, I did not study. I came back to sleep and yeah, yesterday, um, I studied the whole day. I was on my books, studying. Well, I did to buy bread, but I was studying the whole day. And today I went to write and I think it went well. It went okay. The paper was not difficult. Yeah, because I studied. If I didn't study, it was gonna be difficult, but for me, it was not. We've come to the end of the vlog. This vlog is gonna be long because I've been vlogging for the longest time ever. I've been vlogging for so long. Please, please, please comment down below good habits that help with mental health. And yeah, there are things that you do, Inji, to make yourself feel good. It may be going to the gym. It may be reading a book. It may be listening to a certain type of music. Just comment down below what you do to make yourself feel good. And I hope that you guys enjoyed this video. Please do not leave without smashing that subscribe button. And I'll see you guys in my next one.